We're live, we're live, we're at it. You got me over there? Everything good on the technology front? All right, all right, all right, we are back. The broadcast is back. We've got a little rusty. Okay, we took a couple of weeks off. We're gonna talk about that in a second. But we are back and man, we have had a great two weeks and the last 48 hours has been fantastic and fun. We've got a bunch to talk about. The last couple of weeks, it's been crazy and amazing. But for the last, oh, I don't know, 10 to 14 days, been life-changing events on the broadcast. So what we said to ourselves was, we're gonna take a little bit of time. We're gonna break off and we're gonna take it for our families for a bit, then we're gonna come back stronger than ever. So you have to like the post. You gotta share it. We're doing it on a Wednesday night, because last night was Super Tuesday elections across the country, but specifically here in Bear County, it was a big, huge night. So we didn't broadcast last night, we decided to go ahead and watch the returns and we're gonna break them down here in a little bit. So we're coming at it from a different evening. So feel free to like it, share it, please. Make sure people know that the podcast is up this evening on a Wednesday night at 8 o'clock because of last night. So we're gonna push back to Tuesday next week, or maybe Wednesday, we'll see how it goes. We'll see what the best night is available. Maybe we'll ask everybody, Salo, which is the best night to do it in time? Maybe we move it up? Maybe we change a few things in the coming few months? Because we gotta, we gotta clean this up a little bit, right? We've been at it since about July. We've got about 20 or 30 of these under our belt already, but we can do better. We can make better arguments, we can bring on better guests, we can bring on more and different interesting topics and have fun, we could take it on the road. There's a lot of things that can happen with the podcast, but it starts off first and foremost with making sure just putting good issues and content out there. We're having a good time and fun while doing it at a time to make sense. So like, share, tag a friend, keep pushing it. I'll try to follow the comments and stuff on here as we go tonight. But again, we're happy to be back. We're welcoming all of you here this evening that are going to join us. And though always the friendly broadcast warning, we do get, you know, hey, we get a little intense sometimes. We make some tough arguments, but we always try to part ways friends. You may not agree with everything we say. And if your feelings get hurt from the beginning at the top of the broadcast, I tell you, I am very, very sorry from the bottom of my heart. But we're gonna tell it like it is. And we're gonna make sure that you also can come back. Put it in the comments. It's Salo and I flowing tonight. So put it in the comments, you got a question, I'll try to catch it. And we'll go back and forth and make it happen here. So we are broadcasting live tonight, Facebook Live, YouTube, and Twitter streaming live from Aligned Mortgage. So we're using their facilities here and we're here tonight, Aligned Mortgage's office Summit Parkway. They are specialists in VA home loans, VA home loan refinances, and taking care of military veterans, retirees, you name it. So we're broadcasting from here tonight. So thank you, Chris Kano, for the space and allowing us to broadcast. Again, out of Aligned Mortgage Go, check them out, www.alignedmortgage.com. If you got any questions, you want to meet people out here, give us a holler. But thank you for letting us use the facilities, we appreciate it. Want to always start off as well with the, with our sponsors. Hey, man, throw up. We got AAA Garcia Bell Bonds, we gotta thank Louis Garcia AAA Garcia Bell Bonds. You know what? There's two really great bail release programs going on right now at the county. One is Javier Salazar's ability to just let people out of the jail every day for free. So that's one way to get out of the jail. But the legitimate way to get out of the Bear County Jail is to utilize this fine gentleman and his family at AAA Garcia Bell Bonds. Louis is always there for us. You can't miss the guy, he'll help us out. If you go in and say, hey, man, I think I saw you on the broadcast. I'm pretty sure, like we always talk about, there may be a discount if you're suffering from a potential legal issue. Again, innocent until proven guilty, unless you're a politician. In which case, prove yourself innocent, you are guilty, guilty as charged politician. But no, Louis Garcia is always taking care of business. We love you, thank you for what you're doing. And our friend Tyler Hall from Speedy Salt, Tyler always taking care of us. This guy knows when you need salt before you need, before your system tells. Tyler is in on it already, shows up at your doorstep with the 50-pound bag of salt, probably freaks you out knocking on your door and delivering it immediately without a second thought. Tyler Hall and Speedy Salt. And he also helps in the podcast from time to time, too, doing the work behind the scenes and taking care of us. So thank you, Tyler, we love you, we love you, we love you. Tonight also, we have with us is just, don't forget, Salo Rodriguez, the impresario, the chief, the big toe. If anybody remembers the movie Stripes, Salo, you remember the movie Stripes? Oh my god, come on, man, come on. You're, you just lost street cred right there. If you remember the movie Stripes, anybody wants to comment on this, the big toe, the big toe was the man in charge, right? The drill sergeant was the big toe. Sergeant, I'll tell you right now, anybody who knows the name of the sergeant, this is a, this is a movie question, I'm sorry, I'm going off script here. This is a movie question. Who, what was the name of the sergeant, okay, in Stripes? He was in charge of, he was the, he was the drill sergeant when John Candy, Bill Murray, Harold Ramus went through basic training. If anybody can name it, I tell you what, anybody puts that name in there, first person who puts the name of Sergeant Blank from Stripes, all right, not the actor, the name of the character, oh my god, you're close, you're close, Arguello. I'll give you a hundred dollar gift card to a restaurant of your choice. He's the big toe, Tyler Hall's the big toe. I gave you a choice. So whoever gets the name absolutely correct of the drill sergeant in Stripes, first one, oh my god, Javier, got it, Holca. Sergeant Holca, okay Javier, I gotta catch you, brother. We're gonna do a hundred dollar gift card on him, we just gotta give him a good restaurant, whatever restaurant you love, brother. So remember that Javier and Christina Arguello. I don't know, though, brother, Javier and his wife are like mad physical fitness. They're like CrossFit nothing, I mean, they're total competitors. So I'm not sure, they probably gotta eat like cardboard. Probably eating like kale. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Trust me, if I could look like Arguello, I totally would. The guy's ripped out. So, so I'll probably have to get him a gift certificate to some sort of health food craze location, but that's okay. I'll buy you a lot of protein shakes. My wife says can't hear you. Maybe it's just her. So, hey, let us know if you can hear, Arguello, okay, Arguello must be hearing, because he just threw up a few, a few emojis of laughing, smiling faces. So yes, 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 Sergeant Holca, we love you. Okay, so back on task here, I'm sorry, Salo Rodriguez, of course, is on the technology tonight. He's the, he's the producer, he takes care of all of this. You have business needs, you want to broadcast, you want to do your own podcast, you want to put that information out there, and you want to get going on anything, it could be anything. Salo Rodriguez and his team are always available to do this for you. What you see, all of this behind in the different locations we shoot at, it's all his genius, and he's taking care of business. But I do want to show, what was up? Oh, Tony Gonzalez is watching? Tony Gonzalez, the leader with, in House District 23 in the Republican primary. Welcome, brothers, good to see you. Great race, you're at about 28 or 29% leading going into the runoff. And Stephen Pennington won the Republican nomination, I think with like 62 or 63% in the Bear County Tax Assessors Collector. Both of them have been on the show. So Pennington, great job rolling out and cleaning up in the primary. You gotta come back on so we can talk about what's the game plan for the runoff, the May 26 runoff. So maybe we get you back on, and we, you know what we should do? We should go out and do a debate. We should do a candidate forum. We'll do a, you know what, this is an idea, see, this is the broadcast in action. When it's Salo and I, we're back now, the dynamic duo, Starsky and Hutch. What's, okay, that, I don't know, that's, Cheech and Chong. Which one of us is Cheech and which one of us is Chong? Simon and Garfunkel, I can tell you right now, he's Simon. And I'm definitely Garfunkel. But no, but we're back at, but you know what, that's what we're gonna do. Let's try to put together runoff town hall forum, and just, and let's podcast it here at Aligned Mortgage, right? And let's just let people talk and ask questions, we'll throw a pizza party or something like that. Let's get that done. Laverne, okay, remember earlier I said AAA Garcia Bell Bonds is fantastic, you gotta use them? Yeah, no, not after that Laverne and Shirley comment. But I tell you what, Escaleto, I don't know which one's Shirley and which one's Laverne. I'm pretty sure you're Laverne, though. That's what I'm talking about, you see? Starsky and Hutch, all right, okay, Arguello, we love you. Robert, Raul Reyes and Dr. Lynch split some vote, all right, Tom and Jerry, come on, Corman's. Mike Corman's, by the way. I'm a little hurt by that Tom and Jerry piece, especially after Tom and Jerry Rickoff, which we'll get to here in a minute. But Tom and Jerry, look, Michael Corman's 4M Auto Parts on Old Highway 90, that's right, I said it, Old Highway 90, not Enrique Barreira Parkway. I'm sorry, we shouldn't be changing names like that. But go check out, you need auto parts need, I gotta throw the shout out to Michael Corman's in 4M Auto Supply. Go check him out, he's a brother, he's a big supporter, always been taking care of us. So Lenny and Squiggy Ray, I'm not gonna say anything nice about you, man, Lenny and Squiggy, oh my god. All right, we're way off track. So two things have happened, well, three things. Number one is, of course, I got a, I got a sinus infection today. I went and got a, I got a steroid shot today. So I'm a little bit, I'm feeling better, all right? I'm feeling better, I got a shot, and we're ready to go. So I'm a little bit off, right? No more Claritin, but I'm hustling. And so that's minor compared to what Salo Rodriguez went through. So Edith, I don't know if she's watching, because she's probably still recovering, if not resting, with the baby Amado. So let, oh my gosh, oh my, there's the baby right there. So Salo not only creates podcasts, he produces little humans. And there's little human right there. So amazing story. Salo and his wife did not find out the sex of the baby until the baby was born. How rare is that? And then they had a home birth, right? So they wanted to have their child brought into the world, well, in the comfort and love of their own home, right? And their own faith and everything like that. So this is, this is why we took time off from the podcast. And I gotta tell you, completely 100% worth missing a couple of weeks. Yeah, Salo got sick, remember I told you he got sick in the past, got a little anxiety issue, I don't know, probably because he was about to watch his wife give birth, which any man at any moment in time, look, wives can, moms, they can, they can give birth and then go right back to work, it's amazing. You know, a husband though, or a father's gonna sit there and watch that and be, and realize just how insignificant sometimes the role is, right? So because the why, the mom, right, the mother does amazing stuff, wife, girlfriend, whatever your story is, it is an amazing opportunity to be a part of that life-giving thing. Salo did it. So we broke for a week, and his name is Amado Miguel? Amado Miguel, named after anybody in particular? Dad's and Edith's, okay, so I've named it after Salo's father and Edith's father. Amado Miguel, and of course, my wife is begging to get over there any chance he can to hold that baby. Now, I'm doing all I can to block that effort. I love you, but I don't know, babe, but I don't know if we, you know, we've already got five, and I don't need to be walking a kid across the stage, the high school stage at 65. That could be a problem, all right? You're wheeling me over, my son will be wheeling me over. So Salo, I gotta, I mean, we gotta be careful. I'll let her over a little bit, but not a lot, not a lot. She's gotta visit to help, but because she loves babies, so we gotta be very careful. So baby Amado, Salo, blessings. Way to, first-time father, the Lord has guided you to something beautiful, and you are gonna be a fantastic dad. And we missed you, and we're happy to be back in the show. So, all right, so that is where we're at with that piece. Now, it's been an exciting two weeks. Baby birth, Salo and his health issues, I have a sinus infection, like mine's the most insignificant reason of all, right? I had to go get a shot, stairway shot, sinus infection. We had the coronavirus and the, the Super Tuesday primary elections, which we're gonna break down right now. And let's get into it and talk about some of these bad boys. So what happened yesterday? We took off last night because it was Super Tuesday across the nation. 14 states voted across the country, massive amounts of delegates available for both Republicans and Democrats, and of course statewide as well. And then it came all the way down to the local Bear County elections. And there were some ballot amendments, precinct chairs, everybody was on the ballot yesterday. And it's kind of a who's in, who's out scenario. So tons of races, if you went and voted, a couple of things you'll notice that happened. Number one, you can vote anywhere in a county now, they got these new-fangled voting systems and these new processes, you, they print a paper ballot, and now you can go in, you verify your paper ballot, and you put it in the machine, and it sucks it in and does something with the paper ballot, who knows what it does with it. But it sucks it in, and they go and they count them. So a brand-new process with these 280 voting centers. So if you remember in the past, you used to be able to vote in your precinct, and you always had to vote in your precinct on election day. The first 10 days of early voting, you'd vote anywhere you wanted to, but there was far fewer voting centers, or in that case, voting locations. But now, 280 voting, voting centers on election day, which was yesterday. And these votes, and I can't really discount enough just how, you know, I can't undersell how important this election is gonna be, not just for the county, but for our state and for the nation. It is a game-changing issue. When you talk about what's happening in the presidential races, look, the Republican side is locked. Donald Trump's running away with that thing, obviously, he's the incumbent, 95, 95% plus in his primaries, record turnout for Republicans across the country. They're energized, they're coming out. We're gonna talk about Bear County in a minute, though. Bear County seems to be the exact opposite of that for Republicans. And Democrats are in a slugfest for their Democratic presidential nomination, which we saw yesterday, Joe Biden taking off. I mean, came out of nowhere. You wanna talk about Lazarus? You wanna go biblical with this tonight? Joe Biden just pulled the greatest Lazarus of all, of political all time. It used to be Bill Clinton's comeback kid in 92, where he ended up losing at the beginning and came back roaring back in New Hampshire, finished second or third, and then went on to win the nomination. Bill Clinton was the comeback kid in 92. But now, Joe Biden, sleepy Joe Biden, right, has done the unbelievable, and that is stop the Bernie Sanders momentum dead in its tracks. I mean, it is, it is now an even split, and this thing is gonna go the distance, and the president has got to be feeling great about a slugfest at the, in the Democratic Party between two candidates that I think he's gotta be genuinely happy about facing. Maybe not so much on Biden, right? But he'd love to face Bernie Sanders, and he would enjoy Joe Biden. He's already taken cracks at both of them. So all of that, though, is seeping down into our local elections. And here in Bear County, we've struggled with a few different things. One of them is turnout, always struggling with turnout. Can you put up, I think, slide number two, which is the next slide? It should be the total election count numbers. Here we go. So here's the summary results from Bear County. So look at that, total registered voters, 1.1 million. Total ballots cast, and this is already gonna piss, this is already gonna piss you off, 253,071. Yeah, I don't know what the hell's up with that. Well, I know what's up with that, we'll talk about that in a second. Now, watch this, but we're gonna explain this. Democratic Party, 171,829. And then the Republican Party, 81,242. For some reason, ballots cast blank was 18, I have no idea what that is. For a total vote turnout of 22.35%. So here's the scary part. That ballots cast total is the highest it's ever been. The highest it's ever been. Percentage-wise, no. But that's the most ballots ever cast before in a primary election. So embarrassing, when you look at it, that San Antonio can't even crack, well, we're at this point, you only get to 25% Bear County. But it's tough. Look, there's those 280, and these are the final unofficial results, which will be canvassed and completed next week or so. So I look at that, and you see who came out absentee versus early, but in, on, and then on election day right there as well. So we had a heck of a turnout, it was like 133,000 early voters, but 116 or 119, something like that, on election day, which is, usually election day is a two-to-one split. You know, 60, 60, 65% come out early, 30, 35% come out on election day. This time it was higher. Election day saw a ton of people coming out, which led to a lot of different problems for Bear County. So I said at the beginning about how this election was a little different, results were delivered way late. Normally, you see results 7:05 to 7:10, the early vote totals, but not this time, which frustrated a lot of people. And it turns out, we had an Iowa-type software glitch at the Bear County Elections Office. The final results really weren't delivered until about 3:00 or 4:00 AM in the morning. But first results came out about 8:30, and stunning a lot of folks, and we're gonna, we're gonna break them down one by one, and then just kind of talk about the state of the race into May 26. So those are the numbers. What I could tell you about, about turnout, what is scary, and I think you probably look at those numbers and think Republicans are gonna get killed. But remember, Republicans don't have, there's not a lot of Republican energy here in Bear County. And that's visible by the numbers. And there's a lot to talk about why Republicans are not coming out. But main reason is the president's a lock, right? So Democrats have a contested battle. Bernie Sanders, who was supposed to win Texas, ended up getting beat by the Joe Biden momentum. Biden takes down Texas, we'll show the numbers here in a second. Actually, you may be able to put that next one up, the Biden numbers. But so Biden comes in and pulls the victory in Texas. Bernie, though, who was supposed to win? It's a hurt to lose Texas, because he was, he was counting on a Latino wall to hold him tight, and it didn't work out that way. And what happened was in Bear County, though, Bernie Sanders in Bear County ended up winning Bear County. So from a progressive standpoint, from a Bernie Sanders, democratic socialist standpoint, Bear County voted for, in favor of Bernie Sanders. And Joe Biden didn't win the county. So you've got this thing kind of where San Antonio is becoming its own little outlier, of course, across the entire state. That should concern us all, Republican, Democrat, those turnout numbers are obvious. But the Democrats are energized because they have a campaign. They have people slugging it out. They had 18, some people names on the ballot. Some people voted for Julian Castro, I don't even know, guy's not even a racist anymore, but he got votes. So I mean, there was a ton of people on the ballot. But it is an interesting scenario when you see, right, when you see Biden flipping up and taking out, taking down Bernie, and Bernie struggling to gain a foothold here in Texas when he should have won it. So can we put up the slide with the Bernie totals right there? So look at that, 34.4 to 29.9. Bloomberg, our lovely little Michael Bloomberg and his $500 million. Who exited the race today? Elizabeth Warren, still in it, I don't know any reason why, she's not even been, I don't think she's been a top one or two in any race yet, but she's charting her path forward. Pete Buttigieg knocked out, Amy Klobuchar, Julian Castro continues, continues to amaze by scoring less than 1% everywhere he goes. This guy's not even a one percenter. Julian Castro aspires to be a financial one percenter, he can't even be a vote-getter one percenter. But struggling, Tom Steyer dropped out, and all these people flocked to Biden. So Buttigieg, Klobuchar, and Bloomberg today went to Biden. And I think, you know, hey, man, that pushed Minnesota. Pete Buttigieg came in and really helped them out in different areas as well, big endorsements. Julian Castro continues to amaze us with his ineptitude in electoral politics. He endorsed Elizabeth Warren. And she goes on to obtain absolutely zero, and didn't get it done here in Texas. So she got 11.42%, but you know, it is what it is, Bloomberg beat her, Bernie Sanders, Joe Biden takes it down. So that's where the state of that race is. Put up the president's numbers just because, we'll just take a look at that. Yeah, that's pretty much solid. Look, uncommitted did better than Bill Weld and Joe Watson. I mean, it sounds sad, it's a little horrible. But uncommitted, you did great, uncommitted, at 3%. Proud of you, proud of you. Bill Weld, not, not good, not good, buddy. But look, the Republicans are struggling here in Bear County. If they don't figure out, and I was on CASEAT last night doing some, some news coverage, if they don't figure out, some election night news coverage, if they don't figure out how to get the energy going and really turn out their voters, one of the broadcasters last night on CASEAT asked me a very good question, said, is the Republican Party dead in Bear County? I'd like to know what you think. So feel free to put some, some notes down on there. Latinos for Theo Bernie, I love that Dina, that's a good one. Jonathan Delmer joined in. Ray Rodriguez always, always commenting. So do you think the Republican Party is near death in Bear County? Right? Think about that. Put your notes in, just let me know what you're thinking. I'm thinking it's pretty, pretty close. And I'll tell you why. They're not, and these numbers I'm gonna show you tonight are gonna indicate why Republicans are in trouble. And I'll give you an assessment to read on it. It's overall, Democrats have energy. I mean, look, man, we may think they're choosing people that are crazy. We may think they're choosing people that are great, and whatever your view of it is, Democrats do have an energy to them. And they're fighting it out, right? They're electing people and putting up candidates that are really changing the system. And then Republicans, as you'll see from the results tonight, are having a heck of a run putting up old timers and names that aren't gonna win. So most of this is about who gets their name on the ballot and runs. We've got to recruit people on all sides that are gonna get out there and make it happen. And people have to want to run for office, man. And we can't make it so difficult and disgusting that people run from it, because they think it's a horrible career, a horrible life. Public service is admirable, but how we treat politicians is not. I'm not saying some politicians don't deserve it, they do. But when it's a destruction, you know, seek and destroy type mission to be a politician, you know, people run from that, they get afraid of that. So we're not putting up enough candidates, there's not enough inclusiveness and diversity, I think, too. When you look at the Republican Party, and I'll show you some races tonight, there's not enough different names. I mean, the party's got to get more inclusive. You can't be running people, and then, look, it's also on the voter. I mean, the voter has to engage and make some choices here, too, and do, and dig a little deeper. I mean, you just can't go down the list and pick the top name on the ballot everywhere you go. It's not gonna get it done. Candidates have to run good campaigns, right? So you have to get out there, you have to knock doors, you have to go old-school with it, you have to push, push, push. That's where Democrats have been successful, is they go to the doors, you know, at least they're arguing their voters and they're driving them out. Republicans have a chance to resurrect that, but it's gonna be interesting to see. If I had to wager whether Republicans are gonna win many seats in this county at all, the answer's gonna be not, not many. Right now, it's precinct 3 is generally a Republican seat, Lyle Larson's House seat, and that's really about it. Everything else is contested up for grabs, and that is a sad state of affairs for both parties. But for the Republicans, it's terrible, right? Because you are in a position where you gotta get new, fresh blood out there. And I'm gonna show you tonight, make a case for, dig deeper and learn more. And you're gonna be stunned by some of these numbers. So who we got up next? Put, put the next one up there, let's see who we got. All right, hey, Tony Gonzalez. So we're gonna break down some of these races, I'm gonna give you some quick reads. U.S. Representative, it's House District 23. Tony Gonzalez came in at 28% of the vote, was on the show himself, Raul Reyes at 23. This is a predominantly flipping district, right? This thing goes back and forth. Will Hurd ran it and won it for a couple in a row, kind of breaking the cycle here. But they're gonna go up against Gina Ortiz Jones, who won the Democratic side. I think we got the next slide up is Gina. Look, not a lot of votes in there, I mean, Gina comes in at 43,066% of the vote, we know who's going in that one, right? She brought within 1,000 votes of beating Will Hurd. If you talk about seats that are targeted across the country right now, this is a target for the DCCC to come in and win this seat. This is a top target in the nation, and I think they got it, if you go along and you run a bad campaign. So when we go back and look at the Republican side, go back and look at the Republican side, there's a couple of good campaigns here. And we've talked to Tony, right? He's got the credentials, Navy Master Chief retired, got a nonprofit here in town, big, big old Catholic family, love the guy, he's a good man. Raul Reyes, man of faith, working hard, Lieutenant Colonel retired himself. It's gonna be a heck of a battle. Sure would love to have them, maybe we bring them out, Salo and we have a good conversation with them. You know, look, man, this is a tough one. Tony put it together, got the money, raised it, he's got the funding, knocked it out of the park, got the 28%, and roll right on the heels. So that's a tough So that's a tough race to call. Uh, obviously you gotta like Tony Gonzalez going into it, but these, these races are a different mold when you get into a runoff. It's about getting your voters back out. And then the voters that are the other folks on there, there's six other candidates in there that took down some heavy vote count. So where are they going to land? You know, who are they going to endorse? I mean, Tony, uh, came into the district, uh, you know, new face to the community, uh, not, he's always lived here, but I mean, he's new face to the community, new face to the political world. Raul Reyes has been at it before for a little while. So it's going to be an interesting battle. Uh, if I had to pick a, pick a run in it right now, if Tony runs the race he's been running and keeps after and gets out there, makes a name for himself, he's going to win. Um, Raul's got a lot of ground to catch up and makeup, but 5% in the big scheme of things isn't that, in that huge. But when we go into the May 26 runoff, look, either one of these are going to have a tough challenge, right? The Republicans are going to have to come strong, uh, to beat Gina Ortiz Jones. Uh, she's got herself positioned well. She's got a lot of cash. I think double everybody else in the race. Uh, so just, it's just a tough call. If I, my, my pick on this one, I think Tony Gonzalez has got to get in there and knock it out. If he runs the right campaign, puts the thoughts out there, you know, he's got the track record right now and he proved it with the vote count and coming out on top in a big field. Uh, little surprise. I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to see Raul Reyes in there. So we'll give it a shot and we're going to keep an eye on this one. This is a huge one and either one of them is going to get in a good fight and, and try to beat Gina Ortiz Jones. That's going to be a heck of a race, uh, and we're going to enjoy that one. So US District 23, I mean, we've got to bring them in to have a conversation. What's next? All right. Hey, check this one out. Henry Cuellar. I brought this one up. Henry, uh, House District 28 takes in a little bit of San Antonio, a little bit of Bear County. Um, this was a bellwether election for the entire country. So Jessica Sisneros, uh, used to be a former staffer of Henry. Uh, Jessica is, uh, endorsed by AOC. Everybody's lovely. Texas loved Alexandria Ocasio Cortez endorsed by Bernie Sanders, Elizabeth Warren, Henry Cuellar, of course, uh, look, man, guy works both sides of the aisle, takes care of his constituents, right? Takes care of his people. The Cuellar name is huge on the border. So they all came in to try to take Henry Cuellar out. So this became a race of national importance. So here's Henry Cuellar, right? He's got his finger in the, in the dam. It's trying to stop, right? An onslaught of Democrats from the far left challenging Democrats that they don't think are Democrat enough. Just like back in the day, the Tea Party started coming after Rhinos and trying to take them out, right? Same things happening in the Democratic Party. But in this case, Cuellar put an end to it. Now look, man, 5248 is a close race. Uh, but that's a hard fought battle. You gotta give credit to Henry Cuellar. The Speaker of the House came in and, and pushed for him and Henny Storey. They all came in to try to help him, uh, because look, he's a, you know, he'll work with you. If it makes sense for his residents, for the voters, he'll get it done. So big race. Uh, and this kind of sends a shot back across the bow of progressives. Bernie lost Texas. That affected Jessica Sisneros as well. So this wasn't just a local issue that progressives were struggling. It's a statewide issue. So Progress Texas, Texas Organizing Project, they were bragging about Bernie, thinking they were going to get there with him and they didn't get it done. So I think the far, far left is struggling. So there, that's going to be a very interesting, um, thing to watch going forward. Where, who other Democrat, what other Democrats are going to get primaried, right? Who, what Democrat's going to go against Democrats to take them out? And they got a couple of other ones I'm going to show you tonight, but Henry Cuellar knocking it out and getting it done. Congrats to him. Uh, and look, he's great for the border. He takes care of jobs. He understands the energy sector and he's that guy that, you know, you want to do business with Henry Cuellar. You want to work with him. You want to find a path and that's kind of the politics we need to get back to. So who we got up next? Let's see what's next on our thing to break down here. Okay. Yeah. All right. All right. All right. These are kind of at random shots here. This one, this one I gotta take a drink on. Before I, uh, before I riff on this one here, let me see if I got any comments. Last blue dog. All right. Brock, you're off on this one. Yeah. Well, hey man, it's okay. On the Tony Gonzalez one, maybe I could be, I could be. I'm just playing it politically, man. I'm looking at the numbers. Don't forget that. Can't pick them all, man. Nobody gets them all right. This one I didn't get right either. So look, the sheriff's race on the Republican side, and this is a classic example of what I was talking about the Republican Party in San Antonio. Jerry Rickoff, uh, I think he was a former county clerk or district clerk. I can't, I always get those two confused. Former county clerk, um, Willie Ning, 26 year veteran of the San Antonio Police Department, Master Peace Officer, criminal, chief criminal investigator at Bear County, uh, Gary Garcia, uh, 25, I think it was 30 plus years in the Bear County Sheriff's Office. Jerry Rickoff jumped in this race and signed up on the last day. He won outright. He has zero law enforcement experience. Now I'm not, he doesn't just have like a little bit, like he wasn't working as a, you know, like as a, as a security guard at Best Buy. He wasn't a mall cop. He didn't even carry around like, you, you, nothing. Like he, he'll literally say, I have no law enforcement experience. He's so bad, they didn't even have a picture of him. I mean, that's how bad this race was. So the key though is the Rickoff name is well known, right? When you serve that long in that position, why he's in this race, I have no idea. You got, you gotta care about public safety. I mean, at the end of the day, we want a public safety professional in the number one public safety role in the county. Like I get it. So this Republicans, you need to be afraid of, you need to be scared about this. Willie Ning, in my opinion, was the right candidate for the job. Period. Uh, was right for it. You know what? He's, he's credentialed. He cares. He's one of us. He gets it, right? And he understands public safety. Jerry though, I, this is embarrassing. I'll tell you why it's embarrassing because this is all about name ID. Jerry was first on the ballot. Um, the Rickoff name was known. His brother is running in precinct three, former Judge Tom Rickoff. And we're going to talk to him because he ended up in first place, but Jerry, uh, this is embarrassing for Republicans. I'm going to tell you why. This basically ensured the reelection of Javier Salazar. He has, this man has zero law enforcement experience. That's like me walking into the hospital and saying, I'm ready to do a little brain surgery. I think I'm ready. I think, I'm going to start taking some patience right now. I think, I think, I think I can do this. Put me in, coach. Um, yeah. So there has been a lot of talk. I'm going to talk about a guy here in a little bit from the Democratic side that claimed that this is racist. All right. There's a, there's a Democratic consultant who works for Javier Salazar. He's on your taxpayer dollars. Name is Robert Vargas. I'm going to show his comments here in a little bit. He said, and called every Republican in this, in the county a racist for this. If you're racist, if you voted for Jerry Rickoff, sure, according to him, but he blanketed all Republicans as racist. Yeah. Put it up. Let's just put it up there because it's on right now. So this is the guy right here. Robert Vargas is Javier Salazar's, Sheriff Javier Salazar's community liaison. So his role is to engage the community, to be a community liaison for the sheriff. He's paid with your tax dollars, your tax dollars. Here's his comment. It's important to note how racist Republicans are in Bear County. A white man who didn't have a headshot, didn't put out a yard sign, didn't even run an actual campaign, garnered 52% of the votes. KSAT had to knock on his door to wake his blank up to give him the election results. This is what people talk about name ID and identity politics. This is classic. The Rickoff name, the position on the ballot, and he took the job down. Mr. Vargas, under no circumstances does that equate to the fact that these are racist Republicans in the entire county. Not all Republicans are racist. Are there racist Republicans? Sure. Just like there are racist Democrats. And by the way, you're one of them. You sir, that's a racist comment in itself. I mean, we could throw around, throw racism all over the place, but the minute you identified a white man, the minute you identified Republicans as racist, you threw the race card down yourself. Look, this is embarrassing for Republicans and Javier Salazar. I have a special note for you. Can you control your employees? Or do they not care about your leadership or your position or your ability going forward to put on a good front for the community? Javier, I know you. At the beginning of your campaign, you and I talked. You're an SAPD, former SAPD officer. You know how much I respect San Antonio Police Department. Please be a sheriff for all political parties. All. Don't have people who run your campaigns, which he did. He ran your campaign in the beginning. He's at every campaign event. I've got the campaign photos of him campaigning with you. Please don't let him ruin who you really are. All right. You're a good man. I, I, I've known you for a while. Do I agree with everything that's happening? No. Have I been critical? Yes. But at the end of the day, this is embarrassing for the Bear County Sheriff's Office and it's telling Republicans in this community that you want no part of them. That if your people are allowed to get away with this, and I sent, I sent this and copied it on Facebook to Judge Nelson Wolf. Where are you judge? You cut these budgets. Where are you Tommy Calvert? Where are you Justin Rodriguez? Where are you at Chico Rodriguez? Why aren't you not stepping up and saying this employee of the county? By the way, Mr. Vargas, you are paid with Republican tax dollars. So I'm assuming if you think all Republicans are racist, you should forfeit at least 40% of your pay because 40% of your pay comes from 40% of Republicans in this county. 40, 43% are Republican. So if you don't like us, our votes or who we are, period, well then give up that portion of your salary and just take Democrat tax dollars. How about that? Uh, I know I'm on a rant on this because this, this morning, my wife will tell you really upset me. Uh, I look, I choose the best candidate in any race. And if it's a Republican or Democrat, I'll vote either way. I'll admit it. I, I ticket split. And I do jump primaries and have overtime because I want to make sure I choose the right people, um, over party. So I'm not this straight ticket vote. This upset me from a standpoint of, you know, we gotta care more about it and political hacks like this. And he can attack me personally. He can come after me and do whatever he wants to do. I'm, I'm fine with that. I got broad shoulders, man, but I'm not paid by the taxpayer dime right now. You are Javier Salazar. Can you control your people? That's the question. If you can't even handle this cat who does community liaison work, how can you run a jail? How can you lead deputies? How can you have other people trust you? I don't get it. Are you a sheriff for everybody or only Democrats, Javier? Next. There he is. Javier won it with 53% of the vote. That's, should concern him tremendously. Uh, especially Sharon Rodriguez came on the show. Super impressed with Sharon Rodriguez. I gotta tell you, if, if he had some, some thought to it, he'd bring Sharon on. I, she came, what'd you think about it? Remember when she came on the show? She was good, right? Those are stuff. So, um, get after it. Let's get Sharon some work in there. Michelle Badien Tsvella. She came on the show, man. That was a good one. It was a good show. I loved it. Um, she got 12% of the vote. So almost 20,000 people, uh, voted for Michelle Badien Tsvella, but Javier won with 53%. That's a wake up call number. And there's a lot of reasons why, lot of reasons why. Javier, gotta be worried about that number. Javier is going to beat Jerry Rickoff. So back to this issue with Republicans. They simply voted for him. He's topping a ballot and his name made sense. They knew it. What that tells me is you better be running, I mean, amazing campaigns. You better be knocking doors, telling your story. Because if you're not, that's what's going to happen. You're going to lose, uh, to somebody like that because of name ID. So that's one part of it. And the second part of it is voters. Oh my God. I, you know what? Sometimes they, you ever heard the saying, the customer's always right? Yeah. Doesn't apply in politics. The voter is not always right. The result is what it is. But we have to elect, if you're going to have the power of the vote, just look a little bit. Ask yourself some basic questions beyond just position one, or I recognize that name. That's cool. Or identity politics. Is, is there racism involved in that? Of course. I mean, there's, is it as prevalent as people want to run around and scream? I don't know. I don't, I can't quantify those things. What I do know is that some people tend to vote for what they're most comfortable with and, and for who are like themselves, right? Who have I seen? Who I, who do I identify the most with? Okay. That I understand. And there's some, there's identity politics involved in that. But this strikes me as just sad. Um, and it's sad because we've got to dig deeper. So when, when, when it was Christian Archer, who was on the show at KSAT, he asked me, will Republicans, uh, ever win again? Are they dead in the community? And the answer is if this keeps up, the answer is yes. Dead. All right. It's not, you're not bringing anybody out, Republicans. You're not getting it done. You're not putting up the right, good candidates. You're not getting, you're not making it happen. It's divisive. It's broken. If you can't elect people, the yardstick of the Republican Party is who you are electing. Not how many great parties and, and organizations and meetings can you have and, and super events and fundraisers? That's not the mark of a strong county party. Sorry. The final scoreboard on a strong county party is the number of people you're getting elected. That is it. And if they don't fix this and if they don't change it, that's going to be trouble. They should have never, this should have never have happened, but it's not for the racist reasons that some people will want to point out because it's the easy way out. So, um, who we got up next? Let's break down another one. Uh, there it is. Tom Rickoff. Again, uh, Judge Rickoff has experience. He's a previously elected judge. Uh, Trish DeBarry, a local marketing consultant. Trish was on the show. Phenomenal. Um, look, everybody knows, like I, I, I think Trish DeBarry's got the skillset and the talent to get it done. I don't know Judge Rickoff. I mean, I've talked to him once or twice. Um, but a lot of name ID on this one. Trish put together a solid campaign, got out there. I know she's block walking, doing all the, checking all the boxes, making it happen. And then Rickoff's got name ID. So this is back to the proof of name ID, name recognition. I'm that most comfortable with it because I recognize the name and I'll pull the trigger there. And that's what happened, right? And, and look, I got a pick on this one right here. I, I do think, so we call Salazar is going to win the Democratic, uh, he won the Democratic Party primary. He's going to win the sheriff's race. Uh, I'm going with, I'm thinking Tony Gonzalez in the 23rd here in the runoff in May 26th. I gotta think DeBarry's going to put it together, get it done and really close this out. Tom Rickoff, we don't know. He may have a ceiling, may not, but, uh, that's a scary number. I mean, you want to put yourself in a position, um, to get it done. It's not a big separation, uh, but you gotta make a case for it. Runoffs are up in the air. So it's starting from scratch. Get your voters back out and can you create other opportunities? So right now I'm sticking with DeBarry because I do think she's got the team, the talent, the resources to get it done. Uh, Rickoff may have a ceiling. I, I don't know. We're going to, we're going to see though. It's going to be an interesting race. On the Democratic side, we have that one. This Christine Hortick came in and knocked it out of the park. So, uh, 59% of the vote she will be facing, waiting patiently for the Republican side. Who's up next? Oh, and that precinct three is a Republican seat. Uh, no matter how much Ms. Hortick tries, not enough Democratic votes to get it done. Uh, but Republicans got to come out. So whoever wins the Republican primary in that runoff is going to turn off and take down that precinct three chair, Republican seat. Uh, keep an eye on this one, man. Chico Rodriguez came in at 47%, longtime incumbent on the South Side Precinct One. Rebecca Becky Clay Flores at 42% drove him into a runoff. Um, I received mail from Ms. Flores. Uh, I saw her at a community event. She can speak. She can get it done. She's got, I mean, when I'd speak, I mean, she's, oh, she can talk. I mean, she's a speaker. She's a public speaker. Um, she really put up a battle and, and got Chico into a runoff. Look, Chico's to lose. Um, there's some energy in there, right? On the Democratic side though, it's interesting. Becky Clay Flores came out of nowhere. Keep an eye on this one. I probably will call that Chico's got the leg up and he should close it out, but he's got to work hard and he's got a campaign on his hands. Hadn't had to run one like this in a while. Uh, but here we go again with, with Democrats challenging Democrats. They're going for it, man. Putting up names, making it happen. Poor Freddie got 9%. What's next? All right. Republican County Chair Cynthia Brem, John Austin. Cynthia Brem on top at 33, John Austin at 31. Man, this is a coin toss. And as the votes indicate, Charlotte Williamson Eisenhower came on the race, on the show. Uh, it's a, it's a tough number. Jacinto Martinez at 10%. Charlotte ran a race. Again, what are, I mean, this one I would be curious to know, right? If we could go out and talk to Republicans and say, help us understand why you made this vote. Like I would want to exit poll big time. If I could get to every one of these voters and say, yeah, look, help us understand what you were thinking here, right? Where, where's the change? Where's the opportunity? I don't know, man. This is a tough one. So, uh, going, looking at it right now, Brem's got the edge obviously, but this is a coin toss within the margin of error. Uh, Austin and Brem into a runoff. I, I gotta tell you, it's going to be interesting to see where Charlotte goes and Jacinto. I think John Austin, look, it's troubling when a, when an incumbent gets that kind of number, uh, 33%. That's not good. Um, she, she was on? Yeah. So she's got some work to do, but that doesn't mean she doesn't have the leg up, right? That doesn't mean she doesn't have the edge. And these things are hard fought. Cynthia came in and, and she did, I think something very similar to this, came back and then won the seat two years ago. So look, she knows how to win. Say what you want to say, express news, trash her all day long. Do all that stuff. She's the chair. She won the race. She's leading in the runoff. John Austin, not known. So he's got some work to do, but he pulled 31% of the vote. So it's going to be an interesting one. This one's going to be a tough one to call. I'm going to reserve my judgment, but Brem's got the inside track. We'll keep an eye on it. Um, I gotta believe the paper too, and the establishment's going to come in against her. Uh, so that's going to be interesting because Cynthia has ruffled some feathers, man. She's said a lot of things that piss in the establishment off. So we'll see. Republicans like that, man. Republicans like it. Who's next? Ah, Monica Cantara, who by the way, is best friends with Robert Vargas, the man who thinks all Republicans are racist and Grace Rose Gonzalez. Let's hear it for Grace Rose forcing a runoff. This is basically a toss up as well. So anytime an incumbent gets that kind of number, I, I got it. You gotta be worried. You should be concerned that you have no energy. Norma Jean Witherspoon at 35,000 votes, 24%. Norma Jean is a wonderful, uh, human being, always involved in local politics. I mean, she had a good showing. Um, but this is a coin toss. I gotta think Grace Rose has a heck of a shot. They went after, you know, one of the things that pisses me off and, and they went after Grace Rose personally. I know this woman. Um, they went after her personally, attacked her personally. And you knew who led that charge? Robert Vargas. So sending memes and sharing really bad information about somebody, right? That's just the, that's the really the- That's just the, that's the, really the, the coward way of politics, right? Um, Grace Rose, I, I'm gonna go with Grace Rose on this one, just because I want her to win. I mean, I think she's, she, she tells it like it is. Her team cares. They're out there working hard. But mainly, uh, you know, I think Monica, it was not a good showing. Um, and a lot of people concerned. But you know what's crazy is both parties, Republicans and Democrats dysfunctional at this point. But they're infighting and I think that's in the Democratic sides is a problem. They were suing each other. They were in court, crazy times. So keep an eye out for this one. But I'm gonna pick Grace Rose just because, uh, I sure would like to see her win. She's a good person, good people and know her well. Next. He, he, who commented? Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, by the way, yeah. This is from the Deputy Sheriff's Association of Bear County calling for Robert Vargas's removal for calling Republicans racist. Yeah, I mean, huge, huge. So the sheriffs themselves, the Deputy Sheriff's Association saying this, this person needs to be removed from his position as community liaison. Interesting point. Next one. I don't know how that slipped in there. Who we got next? Oh, we are, oh, so we're through the races? All right. So we're gonna get into some coronavirus stuff. So, look, get out and, and get educated in the votes. That's the number one thing I can say. Go out and learn something about it. Ask some questions. Find out who you're voting for. That's it. Strong turnout. Still incredibly weak at twenty-three percent. But turnout's the best it was. A lot of voters. Who are you voting for? Why are you voting for them? Take a few minutes. Now there's only nine runoffs. That's it. Narrow it down. Get in there, pull the trigger, make some votes. We'll follow them. We'll try to do something here at the Align Mortgage and get a, a, uh, podcast going and let's talk to candidates and get some names in front of people. Republican or Democrat, everybody's welcomed. So everybody's welcomed here. And if more people had that attitude that it's okay to disagree and you can welcome the other side, Democrats are welcomed on this show. Heck, man, Robert Vargas, if you want to come on the show, come on the show. Come on the show and, and explain to us why you think Republicans are all racist. Defend your argument. Somebody should tell them. Come on the show. Come on the show. Let's talk about why you think Republicans are racist. Fair point, fair point, fair question. You'll get a fair hearing here. I'm, I'll talk to you. I don't care. I'll talk to anybody. Republican, Democrat, independent, liberal. Bring it. Let's have a conversation. Get out and vote, learn, learn who they are. The city council in coronavirus. So we're, we're running near the end of time here. Got about ten more minutes. I love when people take tragedy as a chance to push your policy initiative. Just wanted to show that one because it says coronavirus makes the case for Medicare for all. Aw, next slide. Crazy, crazy time. You got any more for me? Well, look, here's what happened, right? So we know the coronavirus is taking COVID- nineteen, taking across the country a little bit now. It's starting to grow a little bit. We know nationally it's poking around. We still good? We know, uh, here, remember this one right here. We got quarantine evacuees from the Princess cruise ship. Uh, were brought to San Antonio, over a hundred of them. Uh, pissed people off across the city. We know it's blowing up in Italy, Korea, Japan, obviously China. Over three thousand deaths, hundred thousand cases. People freaking out. It's on the back of your Lysol can, human coronavirus. I mean, you can't touch money anymore. If you have a dollar, your, your dollar's carrying coronavirus, right? People are buying masks off the self. The surgeon general, the surgeon general himself, you stop buying masks, people. It's not gonna help you from the coronavirus. So all these folks come into, into San Antonio. And when they come into San Antonio, everything's concerned, but Mayor Ron Nuremberg comes out and says one hundred percent faith in the CDC. We've got this. We're all patting each other on the back. Good job, good job, good job, city manager. Good job, fire department. Good job, CDC. Everybody, the love fest when they announced these people were gonna be quarantined on base. And then two weeks later, we start to learn that there's problems and issues at Lackland Air Force Base. People walking around. There are nobody watching them, only checking their fever twice a day. People are wandering around the facility. They released a, in a, uh, a quarantine member a couple of days ago, freaked the entire city when they found out that the person actually tested positive. A week positive after a third test. This person went to North Star Mall. I think we got a slide for that one, right? Went to North Star Mall, was hanging out. Now, I don't understand this, but here it is right here. Coronavirus patient released, went to North Star Mall. Why do you leave China? Then you come to Texas and you go have Chinese food at the, at the food court? I gotta imagine that did not live up to your expectations. That's like me living in Mexico. Having a good old time, spending my, my, my expat, expat life over there. And then I come back to San Antonio and I go eat at Taco Bell. Like that, really? Like, it's not, I can't imagine that's the best Chinese food. She went to the mall, hung out at the hotel, ate some Chinese food at the food court, shut the mall down for a day. And of course, Ron Nuremberg then comes over the top and says, CDC, how dare you, unacceptable, and tried to take him to court to block any, be, anybody from being released again in the future. The problem with that was he lost in court. I can tell you right now, the city of San Antonio is notorious um, for losing court cases. And they lost another one. But we're not gonna block the exit. And they got on buses, uh, day before yesterday and yesterday, and they flew out from San Antonio International Airport. So the evacu, the evacuees, the quarantine uh, folks have left the city. What should have happened here was really quite simple, and this is a leadership moment. You should have demanded, right? The city leadership, the mayor himself, instead of suing later, instead of coming after the fact when things didn't go your way and you failed. In that point, then to say, hey, don't let him off the base. Should've just done that at the beginning, Ron. You should've just said, hey, look, that's a federal installation. I cannot stop you as mayor of San Antonio from using a federal installation for these quarantine evacuees. Can't stop them. It's federal land, people. I'll defend Ron on that all day long. Ron could not stop them from coming on base. It doesn't belong to us. The land doesn't belong. It's federal installation. They could have done it no matter who we were. However, part of that upfront demand is not a one of those souls leaves the base under any circumstance at all. If you flew them into Lackland, you fly them out of Lackland. They never leave Lackland. That should have been the demand. And it didn't happen until an accident occurred. You ever seen that movie Jurassic Park, right? I mean, the original one. If you haven't seen it, you've been living in a cave. But, or you have no Wi-Fi or Netflix. However, in Jurassic Park, uh, Doctor Ian, the, the crazy doctor, the mathematician says, um, when they find out that the dinosaurs replicated, they reproduced. He said, man, life finds a way. It always finds a way to get out and cause chaos. You should have known that that was gonna happen. Do not let these people off the base under any circumstances. I'm sorry. The lives, their, their freedom for a hundred and nineteen people stay on the base. And I don't know why, they let them fly out of San Antonio International Airport? How the hell did we fly them into Lackland? But let them fly out of San Antonio International? If you flew them into Lackland, fly them out of Lackland. Don't let them off the base. You should have demanded it, Ron Nuremberg, and you should have made sure it didn't happen. And this is what we get now. Pandemonium and chaos. And you're right, some people have, are turning this chaos into something worse than the actual disease itself in San Antonio. That pandemonium, a mall shut down, all these things are a direct result of patting yourself on the back, saying you're doing a great job at the beginning. And in reality, it was a ticking time bomb. It was just waiting to happen. Ron Nuremberg didn't create the virus, right? He's not the one running around coughing on people, spreading it. But leadership demands at that moment, you protect the one point five million of us. What do you got? All right, somebody, somebody, I'll put it, you put a picture of your baby back up. Go, go back to that real quick. Okay, I didn't do that. Somebody sent that. Corona, kind of coronavirus, Berg. Salo, that's it. Good. Go to the baby picture. Make us all happy. Go to the baby picture. All right. So think about that. I mean, it's, it's tough. It's, it's tough. Leadership moments. When you're, you're mayor, you're a governor, you're the president, you just don't know where the next crisis is. That's it. You don't know. So you have to take a step back and make decisions that moment decisively and quickly and stand for who? The people who are here now, the one point five million of us. And that's the problem with city council. They don't think about the one point five million of us here first. We are first. You are elected mayor of San Antonio, not mayor of Wuhan coronavirus evacuees. You're mayor of the city of San Antonio. We come first. Above all others. That's who elected you and put you in office. That's who you owe your job to. Not people crossing borders illegally and going insane. Not all these, no, the citizens of San Antonio come first. Period. That was the failure. You didn't put us first and should have stood up sooner. So think about those things. But coronavirus all over the place. Like, man, wash your hands. Have a good one. Enjoy yourself. Still give grandma a hug. Have a good time. Don't forget to kiss your kids goodnight. Uh, and by the way, there's no more, there's no more communion blood at, at Catholic mass. I saw that today too. So, uh, yeah, they've stopped giving the blood, uh, the precious blood at mass and the, and the archdiocese. I mean, this, this, this is legit. So it's on, it's on. What else we got next? We hit the memes or, oh, chicken joint. Chicken joint. Biden and one-time rival Buttigieg. I love this one. In a Texas chicken joint, Biden and one-time rival Buttigieg. Just so happens it's Beto. By the way, if you love your Second Amendment rights, Joe Biden at this moment turned and said, I'm gonna appoint Beto O'Rourke to take your weapons. He wants to take your guns. President Biden equals gun czar O'Rourke. Guaranteed. Next slide. Oh, we're gonna do some picks now? All right, we're getting close. Mike Bloomberg, we love you, man. Five hundred million dollars. Yep, didn't happen. And you're not mini Mike because you're hyped. You're not. That's a tough call, man. That's a tough call. President Trump calls him mini Mike. He's actually mini Mike because of his delegate count. I think he had one. There he is, right there. Dropped out of the race, endorsed Biden. If he put, look, if he puts his money, which he will, behind a Biden candidacy, gonna be a tough race, right? I still think the president wins. I think the energy's there. I think he wins the states he needs to win. It's gonna, it's gonna be a good comp, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good debate. Good, but, but can Biden keep up with him? I don't know. You know, yesterday he said he was running against Ronald Reagan. I don't, I mean, I'm feeling bad for the guy. Next slide. Oh, Liz Warren, gotta go. It's time to go, Liz. You and Julian almost had it. Actually, not even close. But you were third or fourth. Uh, Elizabeth Warren missed her window, missed her time. At the end of the day, that's what happened here. She missed her window. Should've gone in sixteen. And I think she missed it and the energy's not there. Bernie sucked up the progressive side. And, uh, that's where they're going. Bernie Sanders is the face of the Democratic Party up until forty-eight hours ago when Joe Biden took it over. So this is gonna be a heck of a race. Hey, credit to the Democrats, man. They're going at it. Like, let them go at it and see who comes out at the end. What we got next? We hit the memes? All right. Oh, man. Okay. Let's do some memes and we'll do a wrap up here. Uh, this is true. If you're a parent, Salo, get ready. These are your, this is memes for you when your kid grows up. When another parent says my kid would never do that. Yeah, that's pretty much one hundred percent true. Your kid's doing that, doing it way worse. Don't cough on me. All right, that's, uh, someone's gonna get mad at me because I did the don't tread on me. We got the snake. And someone's gonna get mad that we put a mask on. Don't cough on me. Sanders twenty-twenty, free chicken for everybody. You know, right now Sanders wants to give away sixty trillion dollars in new spending. If you add that on there though, it's sixty-one trillion dollars. Free chicken for everybody. That is a great photo. I love that one. It's good job. Good stuff. Next. Voting, one hundred percent more effective than complaining on the internet or podcasting on the internet. What, hey, I own it. I'll say it. I'll say it. I'm, I'm podcasting. Oh, I love this one. I'm sorry. So there's Bernie Sanders right there. Does anybody remember her name? Give you a few seconds if you can put it up there. Nancy Carrigan. So if you remember, Tonya Harding took a baton to Nancy Kerrigan's knee like twenty-something years ago and ended her skating hopes for the Olympics. And of course, right there it says Bernie Sanders and then the DNC. The DNC's Tonya Harding. Ah, this one I saw from our Guayo. Cheat day had me like, look at that baby. Come on, man. In the little, in the little first responder outfit. Gotta love it. Ah, fighting the coronavirus on the South Side. Uh, West Side too. Hey, you know what? I'm a little pissed and I'm gonna tell you why. Okay, that's Vicks. Everybody knows Vicks cures everything. Hey, but, 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 hold on. You know what is being forgotten this whole thing? Another Holy Grail? Besides the egg? Oh, my wife said took a baton, not a baton. Alaveria plant. Who's family? My, my, come on, man. This is, maybe this is just a West Side thing. I don't know. My mom had an alaveria plant in the front yard. I could have had, I don't know, chicken pox and mom was taking the alaveria plant, breaking it off and putting it on a cuts, alaveria, I was coughing, alaveria. I mean, you name it. It was everything. Hair gel, alaveria. Alaveria plant. That can beat the coronavirus just like Vicks can as well. Next. What do you got? What do you got? Ah, this. I love this one too. Me looking at the F my kid received on the math homework I helped him finish. Hey, moms, moms out there, when you check your kid's homework that dad helped him with, how often is that the scene? Every time my wife checks the homework I did with Luke, that's what's happening. Cause I can't figure out how to do Common Core math. I just can't do it. I, I don't know. I want to use sticks. I want to divide. I want to do it the old fashioned way. But yeah, I want to use an abacus. But that right there is totally me. My wife busts me all the time. Screwing up my son's homework. All right, next. Oh, yeah, there's new Fiesta medal. Hey, man, you know what? You know what's struggling this year? We may cancel, there's, we're watching Fiesta, people. We may or may not do it. And, and Fiesta medals. They're from China. Fiesta medals are manufactured in China. You want to piss off San Antonians more so than bad, crazy elections that nobody's happy about? Or coronavirus? We'll do it. But a coronavirus medal? That's bad news. If you slow down your medals, if we don't get our medals, riot, revolution. Next, next meme. Ah, of course, today we're safe from Bloomberg ads. We'll never see him again. You know, Mike Bloomberg paid his entire campaign staff all the way through November. Yeah, they're paid through November. It's amazing. They're all paid through. Next, we go, anything left? Ah, Rick Astley for president. He will never give you up. He will never let you down. He will never run around. Okay, my wife's like, bro, it is done. It is done. Stop. I will be doing some karaoke. You know what we should do? We should ask Robert Vargas to come on. I think, I think I saw him sign on. We'll ask Robert Vargas to come on and talk and then we'll karaoke our argument. We'll karaoke our argument and we'll sing Rick, Rick Astley songs. So no matter how angry the debate is, we'll be forced to at the end, sing a Rick Astley song. Nah, maybe not. I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'm dreaming. Maybe I'm dreaming. Next slide. Yeah, I love this. I'm, I'm sorry. This is just sick and funny at the same time. I, I don't even need to say anything about it. It carries its own weight. There's the CEOs of Purell and Lysol right now. Look at that cat. San Antonio, you've cleaned out every shelf of Purell and Lysol. We get it. You should have taken the Fabuloso first though. I'm telling you, you can put Fabuloso on anything. It will kill every Ebola? Got it. Coronavirus, done. SARS, H1N1? Meet Fabuloso. Don't ever challenge Fabuloso. Okay, there you go. CEOs. Okay. I'm Joe Biden. I forgot the, come on, man. I like old man Biden. That's gonna be a heck of a debate. We're gonna have, he's, you know what? Yeah, I mean, look, the guy served his country. He's ran for president three times, finally won a primary this year. He's a, he's a grandpa, man. He's old Grandpa Joe from Scranton, PA. So, look. Right, that's it, right? Oh, you got more? What we got? What we got? What we got? I put this up. Yeah, some of these sneak in here. Don't forget. Greg Popovich wants you to set this country straight. I, I wanted to say this because look, I, look, everybody, you know, Popovich, dude, you've, you've done amazing things. I get it, man. You're fantastic. If somebody told you at a press conference how to run your basketball team and the things you were doing wrong, I'm pretty sure you would eviscerate them because that's what you're known for. You're known for eviscerating challengers in the media and all this other stuff. Now granted, it's dry and sarcastic and it's surly and that's your style. Old Air Force guy. I'm an old Air Force guy. I am, I am. So I have immediate street cred for you. But then you can't turn around and tell people how to live their lives. If you're not, or do their jobs, if they're not allowed to tell you the same without getting, I don't know. A little hypocrisy there. And of course, Ronnie doing all he can to get any publicity from Greg Popovich. So great comments on that post, by the way. Nobody wants Greg Popovich telling us, this is how fickle the world is. And Popovich will probably laugh at this as well. He'd probably be like, yeah, they love you one day, hate you the next. Hell, man, they'll love and hate you five times within the same day. Uh, but the, you know what? So what have you done for me lately, world, especially in professional sports? Tim Duncan coached yesterday, took over the team while Popovich was out. So, yeah, Popovich, Gen Xers. That's Greg Brockhaus, Gen Xer. Salo Rodriguez, Gen Xer. That's how we were back in the day, man. Tats and coors. Tats and slits. All right, we probably gotta, we gotta wrap this one up. We're at the end of the road. All right. You gotta come on the show. You want to talk. If you want to debate the facts, you want to have some fun with it, that's it. You can come on the show. And we can discuss it and we can go different directions and we can be mad and upset and we can say, you're wrong, I'm right. Um, and then at the end of it, you just gotta recognize that it's part of politics. People are gonna disagree. Where it's getting wrong is people being Where it's getting wrong is people being disgusting. Took some shots at some folks in the Democratic Party tonight because they deserve it. Not all Republicans are racist. Not all Democrats are freeloaders. Um, not all you fill in the blank are bad people, misogynists, haters, racists, Nazis. I mean, you can go right down the list of the things we're calling each other. Liberals, uh, idiots, fools, disgusting. I mean, you name it, criminals. I mean, the, the names are getting out of control. But that's the politics we live in. Doesn't mean San Antonio, we have to adhere to that and, and go that far with it. Disagree, but don't be disagreeable. Um, and I think where Mr. Vargas messed up, um, is that you're paid by taxpayer money, man. I, you, please. Be respectful that not everybody on that side of the party is a racist. Uh, people care about our community. They love it. They just disagree with you, sir. They disagree with you and that's okay. Um, but you represent everybody, especially as a community liaison, right? Um, and it's the same for me. I mean, I, look, you got, I, I can be held just as much accountable as the next person. I put my name on a ballot and I stood for it and that's fine. And they attack and they'll come after you and say anything you want to say in spite of whatever facts, figure, it doesn't matter. People are going to make up lies and they're going to go, they're going to come after you. I do it because I love the community and I want to see great things happen for us. I just disagree with the people who are in leadership now. And I think we can do better by digging in, learning, grabbing the facts and information and making your vote. At the end of the day, the scoreboard speaks. That's it. And they still come after me a year later. A year later, they're still after me. I rent free space in some people's heads in this, in this city because they just can't disagree and be okay with it. So what I'm asking is let's close it out right. Let's do two months to the primary runoff. Let's make it happen. Let's get out there. Let's learn who these candidates are. There's nine races. Let's put our names on the line. Let's have the debate. And let's make it happen and let's put our thoughts out there and get it done. The broadcast is back. We're not going to stop. We're going to keep coming. We're going to try to grow, try to do the best we can. Thank you to Align Mortgage for allowing us to be here tonight. It's fantastic facility. Uh, thank you to AAA Garcia Belbons. Thank you to Salo. Thank you to Tyler Hall, I'm Speedy Salt. Thank you to my family. Uh, and welcome to the world of Otto Miguel. The broadcast is every Tuesday night at 8:00 PM. We did tonight because last night was election night. We love you. We're going to be back. We're not going to stop. Nothing will stop us. Say anything you want. Come after us any way you can. The broadcast, my team, my family, we're not stopping. You cannot keep us down. We're here for you. We're here for facts, information. Come and join us. We love it. Let's get to the hard debate. The broadcast, as we always close this sucker, is officially out.